Good morning. It is Wednesday, February 12, 2014, and we're in the Board of Commissioners hearing boardroom, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We start. Our first subject is public comment. Often, we have nobody to give us comment, but today, there's several. I'm thinking there's a subject, and just to kind of set a little background before I have those people start, I'd like to ask Gloria if she'd talk a little bit about our proposed ordinance concerning marijuana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Gloria Roy, County Council. The Board of Commissioners is presently working on a draft ordinance to regulate or to ban and then possibly regulate medical marijuana dispensaries in the unincorporated area of Marion County. Now, what do we mean by unincorporated area? We mean that any area outside of a city limits. Within a city limits, it's the jurisdiction of the city entirely. So, what the Board is considering is starting first from the proposition of a ban on the facilities for agricultural lands, the farm and forest lands. It's not an appropriate use to have a storefront-type operation on our valuable farm and forest lands, so it will not be permitted on agricultural lands. The state law is in conflict with its own state laws and its history of protecting agricultural lands and land-use planning. Within the other areas, the industrial, the commercial, and certain mixed-use zones, a dispensary can apply for a ban exemption permit. There are serious concerns that have been raised by the Board of Commissioners, the sheriff, and the district attorney regarding the sufficiency of the state permitting process through the Oregon Health Authority. There's been even testimony last week from individuals that the intent is to operate this like a storefront. The county is looking at it more in a pharmacy-model type of an operation as opposed to a social club-type of an operation. And so, for those certain restricted areas, there will be an opportunity, and there are going to be some serious compliance requirements as part of the permit that would allow a medical marijuana dispensary to get a ban exemption permit in the commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zones. So, that is what is currently being considered and being drafted for consideration by the Board of Commissioners. And part of this is complicated by the fact that the Oregon Health Authority regulations have kind of confused the confidentiality of medical marijuana dispensaries with both the growers and the cardholders, because they're saying they will not disclose either the location of the medical marijuana dispensary or the person responsible for that facility, and that's not operating like a business. So, they've kind of conflated that, and we want to also make clear that this ordinance does not regulate growers or cardholders. This is only about the dispensaries and operating in a true business fashion if that's what the intent is. So, that's kind of a preference for perhaps some of your comments today, as well as what the Board might be considering in the future. And I apologize for my voice. I've got a little bit of a condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Right now, that ordinance is planned to be talked about or decided on on the 19th, and the other part that I didn't hear Gloria said, it does include an exemption process, so you'll want to be taking a look at that. So, any other comments before we start? What I'll do then is, as you've written, I'll ask you to come up, give your testimony, just looking for a couple minutes, start with your name and address, and then go ahead. Normally, the Commissioners won't respond. It isn't a hearing. It isn't a debate, but if you want to go ahead and tell us what you're thinking, we'll start. The first is Chris Os.
Can I hand you guys one of these packets?
OSS.
Address is 3795 Croizen Creek Road, Salem, Oregon 97302. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking on behalf today of the Salem Cannabis Industry Association. My concern is how much money existing clubs have spent. With only two weeks left, it's going to cripple the facilities that already exist. This is not fair to the people who have been in compliance and fully willing to allow and follow 3460. Simply allowing local oversight and possible city and county fees to open would be a better option than sending my grandmother to the skate park to get laced marijuana from a drug dealer. Banning will only strengthen the black market. As pointed out in the meeting at the Capitol yesterday by the sheriff of the League of Cities, who said that facilities are banned, the patients will be fine because the black market will happen to take over and fill the void. That's insane that a law official would consider that an option. Under HB 3460, growers can profit and sell their medicine, and I believe it is better for communities to have it sold at a regulated facility than in Fred Meyer's parking lot and in your neighborhoods. Senate Bill 1531 would kill jobs and critically ill patients, which, if you seen today, was pushed till tomorrow, and Senator Palowski and the lawyer, Rob, I forgot his last name, said that they would have to take out the banning ordinance in order for it to pass. That just happened about a half hour ago. We have a member that has to pay $178 for a ride for medical transport from Dallas because there are no facilities there for him to use. By the time he pays for the transport to get to our place, he has zero money left out of his social security check to get medicine. It is inhumane to make someone in his situation pay that amount of money and travel that far. This law will make people like Richard suffer because they refuse to use western medicine that over 100,000 people a year die from FDA-approved drugs. If this is really about the children, I ask you to read the pamphlets I provided for you today. UCLA Laskin School of Public Affairs Study found preliminary data from research indicating that certain measures such as security cameras, the presence of a guard, and posting of signs requiring a prescription card may indeed be effective in reducing crime within the immediate vicinity of medical marijuana dispensaries. The same results were found by the Journal of Studies of Alcohol and Drugs, but they focused on the large concentrations of medical marijuana facilities in one area, which will not be the case here due to lack of retail space and the thousand-foot rule. And in closing, I would like to remind you of Ellen Rosenblum, Attorney General of the State of Oregon. I was a part of her election team, and she was noted to be the first politician in Oregon to be elected by a medical marijuana community. We also have the will and the ability to put our efforts behind a recall or a new candidate for any position of a public official who is not fair and just in their public service obligations. Thank you.
Amy Zimmerman.
Good morning. I do have a handout for everyone involved. Good morning, and thank you for listening to us once again.
Amy, would you pull the microphone right up, please? I'm sorry.
My name is Amy Zimmerman. I reside at 5150 Norma Avenue South in Salem, Oregon 97306, and I'm going to read this. It's in front of you if you'd like to follow along. I'd like to introduce myself and answer a few of your questions I've heard over the past few meetings as we get to know each other. I've lived in this community, growing up here, since 1980. I come from a conservative Christian upbringing. My father is a retired Air Force captain. As a former Girl Scout founder and leader in this community, I strive to maintain safety and strong family values, believe strongly in giving back to my community. I have three children and a stepson. I have a bachelor's degree of science from Oregon State, majoring sociology, along with a master's degree from Portland State in public administration. I could go on more personally, but let's not rush our relationship. I own a medical marijuana facility in South Salem and have an ongoing can drive for a nonprofit in town, along with I have done a coat drive, a toy drive, along with sleep country. We also had a giving tree for some of our patients this Christmas. Our neighbors love us and are glad we're here. There's an attached note for you to review. We opened in August 2013 at a different location. We are now trying to show proactiveness, realizing we were initially too close to a school. We moved immediately, as you may have seen on Channel 12. Prior to my understanding of medical marijuana, I actually put my son into a rehab facility. Doctors wanted to prescribe him a variety of prescription synthetic drugs, and after listening to his fact-based argument with educational sources, I realized I was in the wrong, which teenagers love to hear. I'll let him tell you his story, if you will hear. My fear is, with unregulated marijuana in our community, patients will revert back to buying from streets, store parking lots, and let's face it, in the high schools. In response to Marion County Commissioners meeting, Public Safety Coordinating Council, and statements made by presenting attendees, there are a few points I'd like to share with you about medical marijuana, O-M-P, and public health in our community in general. With O-M-P, children are not involved unless they are a patient recommended by a doctor. Really upset me to hear, as a community member, our county and district attorney, Walt Beglow, refer to our governor, who's an M.D., as a fly-by-night doctor. Marijuana should be viewed as an herbal remedy per pharmacopeia. The American Medical Association has recently revised its stance on marijuana, as has the National Institute of Cancer, which I printed a copy for your review. I don't have funding to print all the articles I'd like to, but I did send you each emails without response from any of you, other than a confirmation from District Attorney Beglow that he did receive it. Very sad that I've opened every form of communication with you and have not received a response to any of my statements. I agree recreational legalization should not be rushed. However, the O-M-P is a great opportunity, and in the city of Salem has caused no negative issues, to the extent many people don't even know we exist. I could go on. I want to try to reduce this to say, we did, as many medical facilities in the town, create an association, Salem Cannabis Industry Association, modeled after Oregon Cannabis Industry Association. We have mentors. We have our own attorney. We want to do this correctly, professionally, and show you that we are here to rise above the minimum requirements of the law, and I please ask you, talk to us. I haven't been in this industry very long, but many of us have, and we're here to work with you and keep the community strong. Let's get rid of meth and heroin, guys. This is crazy. Please, it's a plant with soil. Organic. You have any questions for me?
Commissioner?
Yeah. So, is your facility within the Salem city limits or outside of the city limits?
It is, but I do have a facility outside of Salem limits as well.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Jeremy Bruce.
Just, er, my name is Jeremy Bruce, and I live in Salem, Oregon. My professional background is I am an electrical engineer and have worked in the tech industry for the last, since 2004. Got my Bachelor of Science degree up in Portland State.
I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you. Real close to the microphone, that's just how it is. Pull it right up, too, if you would.
Pull the whole microphone.
There we go. My background related to the medical cannabis industry is I have been a patient and producer of medical cannabis for the last 10 years. There has been concerns with local authorities or by local authorities that HB 3460 seems to be too light when it comes to local control, enforcement capacity, and public safety. I would like to address these concerns or at least comment on them and as well as provide into some medical benefits of cannabis. The concern one, first dealing with public safety, I would like to debunk the gateway drug theory so adamantly spoke by most, all law enforcement. For years, law enforcement have claimed that while cannabis itself may not be as dangerous as so-called hard drugs like cocaine or heroin, it is a gateway drug that leads users to more dangerous substances. Well, despite the fact that more than 40% of the U.S. population since 1960 has tried cannabis, that's over 107 million Americans. 37 million Americans have tried cocaine, while only 4 million Americans have ever tried heroin. 107 million people, not one known death. In fact, some researchers believe that the cannabis illegal status is the real gateway because cannabis is illegal, those that seek it out are exposed to harder drugs by the criminal element on the black market. These criminal drug dealers usually carry inventory of different drugs, and this exposure to the illicit market can lead individuals to try more dangerous drugs. It's simple, and the fact that cannabis is illegal is truly the gateway that leads, you know, kids, youth, and whatnot to more advanced drug use. Implementing a dispensary program will actually help public safety, reducing that exposure to the illicit drug market and the criminal drug dealer by reducing the demand from the black market. Implementing a dispensary program will alleviate concerns with cannabis being accessible to non-patients as well. Dispensaries only supply patients. These patients are required to show state ID and O-MPP ID at the front door. Non-patients are not allowed to purchase from dispensaries. Plain and simple. The concern with lack of control and enforcement capacity can both be easily remedied by mandating any dispensary willing to operate in Marion County to simply register, and it's, no one's hiding from you. And implementing an excise tax on all cannabis transactions as a, from producers, processors, and retailers can easily pay for the enforcement necessary from seed-to-sale transaction. I, as a producer, would have no problem with paying a tax to implement this. The medical benefits of cannabis have been recognized for millennia, and for the last 10,000 years, we have used this plant medicinally and industrially. Now, science is beginning to tell us that, on a microscopic level, that, yes, this is actually confirmed. Within cannabis, there are compounds called cannabinoids, and a few to note are THC, CBD, and CBN. THC moderates pain, stimulates appetite, reduces nausea. CBD treats psoriasis, reduces artery blockage, relieves neuropathic pain, inhibits cancer growth. It's an anticonvulsive, anti-inflammatory, and antipsychotic. CBN alleviates insomnia, relieves pain, and helps control muscle spasms. Within our body, we have an endocannabinoid system which has receptors, namely CB1 and CB2. The CB1 receptor is primarily found in the brain, and the CB2 receptor is throughout the whole body. Our bodies are already preconditioned to already accept this plant. In 2003, the U.S. government, in partnership with the Department of Health and Human Services, were awarded a patent for hemp oil as a potent healing agent. The patent is US 6630507, wherein the patent clearly states unequivocally that cannabinoids are useful in the prevention and treatment of a wide variety of diseases, including autoimmune, stroke, trauma, Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and HIV dementia. The patent awarded in 2003 is based on research done by the National Institute of Health and is assigned to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Resources. HB 3460 has a broad scope. It's a brand-new industry, so it is up to us to really make a positive movement forward, and we need to be leaders and set positive examples for everyone else to follow. Being in Marion County, state capital, we should be the leaders that show everybody else how this should be done. And we have patients that use cannabis to alleviate chronic symptoms, and it is our duty to try and protect these patients by giving them a safe access point. And today, hopefully, I have been able to remedy the concerns of our community authorities. The lack of internal control by local agencies can simply be fixed by registration. Additional background checks can increase facility or increase the security within the facility, and the lack of state enforcement capacity can easily be fixed by introducing a tax on all cannabis, on all cannabis transactions.
Can I ask him a question?
Okay. Commissioner?
Thank you. So, I pulled up on my phone the draft ordinance that we're working on that still is in progress, so there's, will be changes, but I think this part was pretty much solid. So, I just want to run through what the registration requirements would be and ask you if you'd have any issues with any of them, all right? So, the first one would be providing the name of the business and the business location. Second would be the name of the business owner and manager, if they're two different people. Third would be a copy of the OHA permit. Fourth would be confirmation of passing a criminal background check performed by the sheriff for all owners or employees that will work at the location. Next one would be written authorization for OHA to disclose information in Marion County about the business and applicant in conjunction with the permit. Sixth would be a bond, a letter of credit, or a cash deposit refundable at expiration to cover any potential county liability to federal agencies. Seven would be a waiver of liability against Marion County, its elected officials, and so on, arising out of the revocation of or refusal to grant a permit for any claims alleging a taking, inverse condemnation due to revocation. And then the last one is waiver of liability against Marion County, its elected officials, officers, employees, for claims arising out of any arrest prosecution for violation of federal or state criminal laws. So, those are the, there's no tax involved with it, but those are the elements. So, anyway, just one.
I'm not a, I'm not a dispensary owner. I'm a producer of.
Right, so it wouldn't even, so it wouldn't even cover you, then?
No. No, it would not. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. Next is Jessica Bull. I hope I say that right. Jessica Bell.
Thank you for taking the opportunity to listen to me today. My name is Jessica Bell. I live here in Salem at 4058 Liberty Road South. I am a patient myself. I personally use marijuana to help fight my rheumatoid arthritis, my migraines, my fibromyalgia, my lack of appetite, my stomach emptying disorder, my IBS, my bipolar, and there's many other conditions that marijuana helps me with that I no longer have to take prescription drugs for. I'm hoping that you guys will take into consideration that we need safe access here. We don't want it to be in the hands of the black market. Before cannabis, my body was literally shutting down at 18 years old. I do not believe I would have made it to 23 without it. In the packet that Amy Zimmerman gave you, you guys will find my full story, if you guys would be interested in reading that. I just really hope that you guys take into consideration that people need the safe access. They don't have a safe place to go if you guys take this away, and they don't want to have to turn to pharmaceuticals. So, thank you.
Thank you. A little hard to read. Pacey Kraus Jacoby. I'll probably say it all backwards.
Jacoby Pacey Kraus.
All right.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jacoby Pacey Kraus. I live at 4058 Liberty Road South in Salem, Oregon. Cannabis has changed my life in more than multiple ways for the better good. I grew up, raised by my grandfather. He has been a police officer in Lincoln County his entire life. He retired as a police officer and is now part of Lincoln County Probation and Parole. So, my whole life, I was, you know, I was under the assumption that marijuana was very bad. It was very, very bad for you. In high school, I was an extreme athlete. I was first-team All-State all three years in high school. But coming back to my senior year physical, I had a head-on car accident as a passenger, and it completely, my top seatbelt didn't stop. All my way got caught through my pelvic section, and it completely ended my football career. I was in a wheelchair for six months, and I was with a cane for up to a year. I was on all kinds of pharmaceutical drugs. I tried everything from Percocet to Latakane shots, Cortisone shots. Nothing worked. The side effects seemed to stack up, and they got really, really bad. But I finally heard about cannabis and how it was an organic and natural remedy. I started doing my research, and I found out that that was very, very true, that even children were getting relief from it. So, I got my card, and it has now changed my life completely. I am able to walk without a cane. I don't hurt on a day-to-day basis unless I'm using it, and it's actually provided me with another goal in life. I can, I have, I have work. If, you know, if this bill passes, the only thing that I know now, which is cannabis, because it's, I've dedicated my life to cannabis because it's completely saved and changed my life, I wouldn't have anything else. So, I would, I just really hope you take that in. There's just a couple of facts before I wanted to get done that I know cannabis, it is seven times more antimicrobial and bacterial than even Neosporin, and it just kind of shows you some of the things that, you know, it's very, very medicinal. I'm Jacoby Pacey Kraus, and cannabis has changed my life in more than one way forever. Please don't take away my right to safe access to medicine, so I don't have to go to the street and be, you know, around all those bad drugs and stuff. It's a, it's a really bad environment out there, and if you haven't been there, you don't want to be there. I would like, you know, it'd be nice to be able to go get your Vicodin, but instead, go and get your natural cannabis that doesn't have any side effects, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charlotte Cull.
First of all, I would like to apologize to Patty for walking out of court last week, but when you said your DA and your sheriff, it upset me because that's our DA and our sheriff. And last week, I shared a story about a little boy that I knew, and today, I want to share my own personal story. In 2009, I had a series of complex migraines, which landed me having a stroke at the age of 29. And I have an eight-year-old son now, who at the time was five. And afterwards, I was given every drug you could possibly think of. I had to stop working for three and a half months and recover from a stroke. And meanwhile, I was having a hard time eating. I couldn't sleep, and I was scared to death that I was going to wake up and have another migraine and have another stroke. And I chose to medicate with marijuana instead of with medication. I had previously, like I said last week, already had a problem with pain relievers, so I didn't have the option of taking pain medication for those migraines. It was either I went ahead and relapsed and became a pill popper again, or I could try and medicate with cannabis. And for my family's well-being, at my personal choice, my family's choice, I can say my son's choice, my husband's choice, my mother's choice, would all be for me to medicate with cannabis rather than become the person that I was years before my son was born, which was not a good person. It wasn't a bad person. I have no criminal history whatsoever. I've never had a parking ticket. But I was not happy with the person that I was, and I did not have the life of a well-being that I wish that I did. And this seems to be a lot about children, and I just want everyone to know that my child personally, I can't speak for no one else's, but my child personally, his life is better because his mother medicates with cannabis. My child is educated on what I do for medication. He's fully aware of what it is. I answer any questions that he has. I've gone as far as letting his teacher know, especially after last week's meeting, when there was an article written, that this is part of my life, and I just want you to know that even my child's teacher seemed to be okay with that, that we're not people that are just trying to slip underneath you guys and get stoned. We literally have 80-year-old women come in and buy cake pops to medicate themselves, women that you would never imagine. There are so many people, you have no idea, that sit amongst you guys, that are police officers, that are teachers, that are state workers, that can't stand here with us because they're afraid. And I have always really had great faith in my government and in my county and in my system. I voted for many of you, and I voted for Walt Beglow, and I just want everyone to remember that I heard some comments when I sat down about how we're everywhere and how you can't escape us. If you think you're a. If you think you're tired, think about all the stuff that we've all had to put together over and over and over throughout these days. I'm not sure if you've noticed over the past week that a lot of us have become pretty good public speakers. It's because we've talked a thousand times, and we'll continue to talk a thousand more, unfortunately. So please, help us. We can work together. We really have formed an association that we can we can do this together without it being a problem. I was hesitant of dispensaries to begin with. I'd never stepped in one. I was an OMPP patient a long time before OMMP patient, a long time before I went and did a dispensary because I didn't know what to expect when I walked in. And it was an amazing experience, the people that I work for, the most family-oriented people I've ever met in my life. Not only that, but I have never had people be more respectful about medicating in front of my child. People aren't, you know, it's not like everyone's sitting around doing drugs in front of kids, you know what I mean? It's we're just the same as everyone else up there. We're normal people. It's not like you guys sit down and we take, you know. At one point, I was taking seventeen medications for my migraine headaches. Right now, I take two, and I smoke cannabis and eat cannabis. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Strand?
So I've I've been to every meeting, and I think from the very get-go, the problem about thirty-four sixty is that not one city council member, no one took the time to come and talk to the any one of the over two hundred dispensaries that are currently open in the state of Oregon and have been open for three to five to six years. There are many, many responsible business owners. You know, we I I my name's Kimberly Strand. I have a place called PG and Lodge. It's a resource center in Kaiser. We've been there for three years plus. We card people at the front door. We have a double entry. You don't even get past our front door unless you have an ID and a valid OMMP card. Never had a child on my facility that wasn't a licensed patient, that wasn't accompanied by a parent. That is the law. There are patients that are under twenty-one years old. I have three patients under twenty-one years old that come to my facility. One has an operable brain tumor. One had two of them have testicular cancer at seventeen years old. Their doctors have prescribed or said this medication is what will work for them for their different things. I think what offends me is that I think even it was Patty that said, "Many places will allow this, and you can just go there." Many of these patients don't drive. They walk. It was said at the last meeting, and I don't know exactly which one of you said it, but you guys said, "Other places will allow this, and the patients can just go there." And that's really, if you don't allow this in Marion County, they got to go to Portland? That's that seems unfair to say to a patient that you may have to travel fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty miles to get your medication. I think the other thing that many people miss about the OMMP program is that it has a designated built-in designated caregiver. Most of our patients don't drive. The average patient that comes to my facilities is fifty-five to eighty years old. You guys all talk about children. I don't have children running over there asking for pot. These are adult people who have served their communities well. I have teachers. I have ex-law enforcement. I have all kinds of different people from every walks of life who are now either retired or disabled. And because you can't take away their children and you can't take away their job anymore, they are coming out for medical marijuana because it helps them. So I agree that there are two different issues here. There's the issue, do we allow dispensaries in the state of Oregon and Marion County and your city for licensed marijuana patients? And I believe we need to do that. The other issue is, do we allow it just for everybody twenty-one and over recreational use? And I think most patients would tell you they don't want that. Two separate issues. And what I saw yesterday, which so frustrated me, it's all about the children. If you open a dispensary, you're going to have crime, you're going to have a terrible element. I'm not a terrible element. I don't run a shady business. I know most of the other owners in town, they do an exceptional business. They've cleaned up their properties. There's additional security. There's additional lighting. We do community service projects. I have four people who bought homes in the last two years who didn't even think they could have homeownership in their communities. My building pays five thousand dollars a year of property taxes that was never paid there before because a nonprofit was there. We are here. We are supporting our communities. We're not criminals. The background check in thirty-four sixty that I have to go through is is no big deal. I own a real estate office. I've been in real estate for twenty-three years. I'm a principal broker, and I manage other people, and I have been able to do that well. None of my agents knew that I medicate because I don't do it at work. I don't do it in front of other people. I didn't do it this morning before I drove here. I do it in the privacy of my home when I need to. Have I had to leave work because I'm in so much pain and I know that I can't be there? Yes, I have, and my staff knows that. I have a place where I can medicate at work, but I choose to go home and medicate. That's my own particular choice. However, you are telling a whole group of people that we are not worthy. I think it's a HIPAA violation too, actually. I mean, you want to talk about people's medicine and their right to get it. You want to monitor it like morphine and oxycodone. When you get your oxycodone and you don't take all ten of them, are you monitoring? Did they throw them away? Did they give them back to the pharmacy? What happened to that oxycodone that person didn't take? They take it home and give it to their husband. Right now, the kids are having pill parties where you dump all the pills from mommy's cabinet in one thing, and they all show up at one house. Where's that parent? And I know I said this yesterday. Most of this gets back to parenting. So maybe Marion County should put on some serious parenting classes for all people, starting in the first grade. If you've got a first grader, maybe you should be taking a parenting class as a parent. Mandatory, because you guys are saying that, oh, it's the children, and they start so early and so young. Well, where is the thirteen-year-old's parent at when you're saying he's walking down the street smoking a joint? He's still underage. The parents are responsible. You're making that my responsibility. Everyone else is children because I might own a dispensary, and that is ludicrous. There has to be some other personal responsibility. The other thing is, they would like the security in these places is way beyond and above. Two panic buttons. My girlfriend owns five bars. It cost her two hundred and fifty dollars to register her bar, and her security people told her, "Do not put in panic buttons because people get shot." What's the message you're sending me when you want me to have two panic buttons in my five hundred square foot room? You're sending the message that you'd like somebody to shoot me when every security company I've talked to says, "We don't recommend you put in a panic button." But the state of Oregon in thirty-four sixty recommends I have a panic button in my facility to make all of you feel safe. I have sixteen cameras. I can watch my cameras on my phone. My cameras notify me if something goes wrong. We're not stupid. We are not trying to set ourselves up to be burglarized. My local police department came into my facilities, told me where I should put cameras, what new doors I needed, how I needed to secure windows. They don't want me to be a victim, and I don't want to be a victim either. But I'm insulted when I listen to all the committees talk about patients as a whole as a lower element in society and that these dispensaries bring only the lower element of society here. It's just not true. It's really not true. Fifty-five to seventy years old is the average age of my member. I have sixty to eighty people come through my doors a day, and that's on a low day. And they are upstanding members of this community who have given their time in service. Please don't shut them out because you're worried about somebody's teenager that they're not paying enough attention to. This is about our rights to have our medicine. I have to get a pharmacy license too to open my shop. Somebody asked, "Why don't?" Pharmacy board doesn't want to mess with this. We've gone to meeting after meeting after meeting. We've invited people to come and tour our locations. We've invited people to come and ask us whatever question you need to ask us. We are happy. We're not hiding. We haven't been hiding for the last three to five years either, and all of a sudden it's an issue. I thought rural Marion County was worried about they didn't want the two hundred acre farmer to have a little pot stand. I get that. But in town, people need to have services. And the amount of people who are going to be able to afford the four thousand dollar application fee, not two hundred and fifty like it is to open a bar, and their brand-new sex shop just opened out over here, and I know nobody's talking about that. But you're all over me about my dispensary, and out on Portland Road, you got people just openly having sex in a building. So again, where is you want to talk morals? You want to talk about, and I'm not trying to divert it from one thing to another. The same thing happened when when the Dirty Bookstore opened up over here and out on South Commercial.
Kimberly, we're just moving along.
I hate to beat a dead horse, but honestly, it is about patients.
We have one question.
Yeah, I do have one question.
What's your question?
So your question is, you're in the city limits of Kaiser?
I am in Kaiser City Limits.
Okay, so you I did you hear Gloria's description at the beginning? I think you came in just a little.
You know what? I'm here for the city of Salem people as well.
Well, no, what I'm telling you is that the ordinance that we're planning, and this was described at the beginning, and I think you might have missed it, only affects people outside city limits.
I understand.
All right, and.
But that is that's.
All right, no, I'm I'm only talking to her, all right? And so it wouldn't apply to yours if it's in the city limits. And then the ban is in the agricultural area.
I get that.
Right, and then there'll be an exemption process in the industrial, commercial, and mixed use. Okay, so just I just want.
What is the purpose of the ban?
Okay, it's not, and as Sam said, it's not a debate right here. I'm just giving you information that you didn't have at the beginning.
I have it printed out. I read it.
All right, great, all right, thanks.
I read law very well.
All right, well, this hasn't been published yet, so.
Well, wasn't it printed out for everybody yesterday?
No, that was the that was the resolution we passed before.
Passed out your resolution.
You did not have, yeah, the ordinance has not been out yet.
The ordinance hasn't been posted, okay.
Right, yeah.
So, but the stills, the thing is, is if you ban one little area, these guys, every single city leader was at Kaiser yesterday, and it's it's all about trying to put in a verbiage to keep us out through city licensing.
But that's not ours. That's not ours to do.
Well.
We're just talking about ours.
Started one place, and it's already filtered. Patty knows. She's been to all the meetings, and the agenda is to ban it everywhere, not just in unincorporated Marion County. And I that's really is really is what's happening, isn't it, Patty, for them to be able to put it through city licensing?
All right, Kimberly, we'll move on. Thank you.
Yeah.
And you're not going to pick me out under the new rules that passed today? You have no obligation or ability to.
All right, we're out of order. Lo and Cruzy? Lauren?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Can I close with this for a second? It's just an application.
Take it there.
Hand it to Gloria or Kim. No, you need to take it. We'll pass it down and look at it. All right, thank you.
So basically, for.
Before you stop, go ahead. Would you come to the microphone so we can hear what you say and record it?
All right. All right, so I've had the privilege of being able to run a medical clinic here in Salem for over a year. By a clinic, I mean that we have a doctor who has two doctorates, a couple of master's degrees, and we seek to help patients get their OMMP application completed.
I need, excuse me, a minute. I I think we need to be done. This wasn't an anticipated part of the meeting, and we have other business. So I'm going to say we've we've taken as many as we have, more than we're listed, we're signed up. Go ahead, Lo.
Okay. So I'm sorry, train of thought got broken.
I'm sorry, too.
So anyway, for over a year, I've been doing this. Twenty years of state service, child welfare here in Salem, Oregon. Oregon Youth Authority helped form it in nineteen ninety-seven. Worked here at Barbara Roberts for SPD, doing accommodations for disabled individuals to get them out of SPL one, two, and three, living in nursing homes, back into their homes. So pretty strong background that way. My point I want to make right now, real quick, is that if you look at that application, what you see is that every patient in Oregon has to list a grow site, okay? So what that tends to do is skew statistics. What it means is that forty-seven thousand grow sites are listed, and our politicians go, "Well, there's more than enough growers in Oregon to support these people. There's forty-seven thousand grow sites in Oregon." Growers, they're not. The number one listed grow site in Oregon is the OMMP program in Portland, Oregon, because people have nowhere else to list. They know they're not going to grow there. They're confined to their wheelchair, beds, muscular dystrophy, multiple sclerosis, cancer patients. In this time, I've had the privilege to serve hundreds of patients around Oregon and in Marion County. Our average age is fifty-three years old. They're doctors, attorneys, teachers, civil servants, all walks of life. As you've already heard from Kimberly, that these people will be coming out. They're not going to be afraid anymore to be be coming out and making what they choose and how they choose to take care of themselves public. In looking at statistics here in Marion County, this is from the OMMP website, and what we're looking at is in Marion County that there is three thousand one hundred and fifty-two patients that are application, that are that are registered cardholders here. That doesn't include caregivers. That doesn't include the family and friends and neighbors who have seen these people benefit from cannabis, medical marijuana. Those numbers are going to continue to grow. Marijuana advocates are going to influence elections. Ms. Milne, I'm happy to see that you're running for the Senate as of Tuesday. Good luck to you. Fifty-nine percent Democratic District Number Eleven. I got to say, though, in looking at how this board is has looked at us as people and as cardholders and as an industry, I'm I'm really ashamed, and I'm sorry to say that. I've always been a staunch supporter of my government. I served my time in the military as well as ancestors clear back to Civil War. I hope you'll take a look at really who's out there, how they're how they're medicating. Don't don't believe the the availability issues. It's really not the way it looks on on the paper. People have to register grow sites, and it's it's just part of the law. So there is not that many grow sites and growers out there to take care of these people. If you were to come down on Thirteenth and Oxford and look at my clinic, we've it's landscaped, it's beautiful. It's a nineteen hundreds-type home that we've completely refurbished. We really, as well as my industry partners, really want to step up and and make this a a medical pharmaceutical piece, educating our patients, helping them. We began looking at right now, we're looking at wellness without intoxication. Did you know that cannabis leaves contain all the nutrients and the CBDs without the THC psychoactive piece? You can juice it. You can put it in smoothies. There is no high to it. There is no getting stoned. It's it's been proven over and over again. Dr. Courtney out of Northern California, there's studies on it, that the leaves contain all the medicine without the THC and the psychoactive piece of it. As long as you don't heat it or decarboxylate it, you you don't create THC psychoactive. So we're really struggling to make sure that people can medicate throughout the day in ways that do not impact them or the people around them in an unsafe manner. We're a great industry, and we're going to be around, and we're going to influence politics for a long time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Before you before you go, I do have a question. I want to make sure I heard you correctly. When you were talking about the grow sites, I think you used the figure forty-seven hundred?
Forty-seven thousand, ma'am.
Forty-seven thousand.
And that's off the top of my head from my Lynn County politician, so.
I won't I won't I won't, but forty-seven thousand, forty thousand is is quite a large number. But then you went on to say or indicating that they're not very accessible. Would you just clarify what you're saying?
Right.
Because that is a large number of grow sites. Are they are there that many that are centrally located so not? Would you just clarify that point?
Thank you, Commissioner Milne. Let me um let me give it give this just a moment. It's actually forty-seven thousand about, and the reason why I know this is because I heard my sheriff and my DA in Lynn County express these numbers. And what they said was, and Andy Olson said that, "We have forty-seven thousand grow sites in Oregon, and we only at the time had fifty-six thousand patients. Therefore, there's more than enough grow sites to take care of these patients." What we began to show him as we were dealing with him at the at the HB thirty-four sixty Rules Advisory Committee is that these people have to list a grow site. It's in the law. So if they and and our patients come in to see our doctor, commissioners, and they and they they say, "What do I list? I'm not ever going to be able to grow. I'm I can't even move my hands. I can't walk. I can't get out of my wheelchair. I can't I'm bedridden." So they're not using those grow sites. None of, I mean, I would say probably.
All right, please stay in order.
Um, thank you. I would say that, and I don't want to throw out statistics, my, I'm, I'm a social researcher from Oregon State, so as my background, I would say that statistics-wise, that at least a quarter to maybe 30 to 40 percent of these patients put a grow site down that do not use them. What they want to do is be legal, Commissioner Milne, they want to be able to possess and use without being targeted and harassed by law enforcement. They're good people, they're, they're, my, my average age in my clinic right now, it's 53, medical clinic, not dispensary, I'm talking about my medical clinic. We just, we just helped a gentleman, our oldest patient now is 92, with numerous patients that are octogenarians. So, we're not looking, my mother's 86 years old, my, my sister, who is currently on a hospice with, with lung cancer, is, is 63. So, you, you, you're not looking, you know, I, I can, we are the experts, we, we are the people that see the people come through the door. You're invited to come to my next clinic and meet these people as they come in, please do so. Meet, meet your, meet your constituents in your county that, that are, that are these drug-seeking hooligans that, that, they're not. They're your teachers, they're your, they're your, they're your friends, they're your neighbors that are afraid to come out, they have prostate cancer, bladder cancer, lung cancer, I mean, multiple sclerosis.
I have, I have one other question, again.
Sorry.
I just want to, I, you're, I just want to clarify, make certain that I'm hearing you correctly.
Okay.
You've referred a couple of times to a medical clinic. What is your clinic? Are you referring to a site, or are you referring to a seminar type?
No, ma'am. What we do is I have a doctor that, that comes in, and because other doctors are either by policy or through federal law are afraid, or otherwise con- constricted on their ability to apply, to sign that application, the patient, actually, the attending patient side of it, patient, attending physician side of it. So, it's created this swell of clinics with, you know, some doctors are what's called major signers, whatever, but the point being is that we actually have a medical clinic. We, we function, we, we procure records from other medical clinics, we look at diagnosis, previous doctor records, in order to make a determination whether that cannabis, medical marijuana, is beneficial for each patient as they come through our medical clinic. So, when you look at that, we're looking at, throughout our industry here, I would say that each of us in the room that are part of dispensary systems and medical systems probably have about a thousand of your constituents on a database that have came through, that are part of our industry, and our patients, caregivers, friends, and, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's, it's, it's.
That's helpful, yeah.
It's a, we're a legitimate medical clinic that, that, that we run that side of it as part of the, and like I said, we've been doing that for over a year here in Salem, so. And again, you're welcome, you can come in, meet people, see the people that are coming in, I, I, maybe you won't be surprised, maybe you will, I don't know. Thank you for your time, though.
All right, thank you. What I will do now is, I know there's one gentleman wanting to speak, we will be deliberating on this most likely February 19th, and you can watch for that, and I'll make sure that your testimony and our notes are included in that, and then you'll have even another opportunity then to speak as we're truly deliberating on the subject. Any comments?
Yes, I just want to make a, a quick comment here. I know I have heard from some of you, have had, I've had the opportunity to also follow up. I'm not ignoring an email, and I know you and I spoke yesterday about this, but with these opportunities, it is my intention to have more conversations with all of you, because as you've come forward to share information, I'm learning a lot. And that's what we need to do, that's what I said yesterday, that we need to better understand each other so we can come to the best direction for our communities. So I appreciate you coming, and, and I do intend to have more conversations with you. So, thank you.
All right, thank you all. We'll move on to the next part of our meeting with this, the consent calendar.
It's my turn.
Move on, your guys' new stance, since I'm only one.
I, you can, no, we're, we're done with this, but on the 19th. All right, fine.
Whose turn is it to read, is it?
I think Kim says mine.
Is it Patty's turn?
I'll talk.
Yeah, well, I, I apologize, leave, leave, we can get in touch, leave information with Kim here, okay?
Would you go ahead with consent calendar, Commissioner Carlson?
Sure. I can read it.
Okay.
A second, just take me just a minute here. All right, thank you, okay. All right.
All right, we're ready.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of the consent calendar and included this morning in it, under Board of Commissioners, the O L C C renewals. And if, if I could, Mr. Chair, just comment on, we, we have been reviewing our process to review O L C C applications, and so the reason I'm bringing it up is this morning, this appears a little differently than it has in the past, where in the past, we've had, when we read the consent calendar, we've actually been citing where the establishments are, and so we have a bit of a new process, they are in the documents here, listed individually. But this morning, under the renewals, is to approve an order recommending renewal of Oregon Liquor Control Commission license renewals, approve an order recommending denial of Oregon Liquor Control Commission license renewals, approve an order reappointing John Caruso to the North Saniam Watershed Council to a term ending December 31, 2015. In Business Services, notification of bid award for $885,295 to McDonald and Weddell Incorporated for the jail roof replacement project. In Finance, approve a quitclaim deed to convey real property identified as tax lot number R 74423. In Legal Counsel, approve an order reappointing Jonathan A. Clark as Justice of the Peace Pro Tem at East Marion Justice Court effective March 4, 2014, through June 30, 2014. In Public Works, Environmental Services, schedule a public hearing for March 5, 2014, to consider changes to the solid waste ordinance, Marion County Code, Chapter 8.05, adding service area standards. In the Treasurer's Office, approve a resolution increasing the change fund for Public Works Buena Vista Ferry from $75 to $200. Approve an order distributing revenues from O R S, Chapter 530 Timberlands.
And I'll second the motion and just tag on Commissioner Milne to your comment about the O L C C licenses. So, in the past, we have done these as they go along, and then, and we've denied a few of them based on sheriff's recommendation and criminal activity there, and then learned that it had no effect because we had missed a deadline in terms of the O L C C. So, now by doing it today, we act, in bulk, we actually meet the deadline. I want to thank our staff and the Sheriff's Office in particular, they went through a whole lot of applications that came in together to get it to this place. I think this is a, a really good step for us.
Just because I don't know, where would that list be available to somebody in the public wanting to see it?
It's, it's in our, well, it's in the information that is always made public and will continue to be.
We could post it to our website if you think that.
I think they ought to be out there.
Right, yeah, so.
Exhibit A, Commissioner.
Right, I just don't know if the materials, these materials actually go on the website, I don't think they do.
But the list should, and then people can know who, and, and that might elicit some comments.
Yeah.
All right, it's been moved to second, approve the consent calendar, as just read, any further discussion? I hear none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Action item, the first is under Board of Commissioners, consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement for a short-term loan of $60,000, up to $60,000, for the Marion County Housing Authority. It has John Latimer's name, so naturally, I'll then turn to Gloria.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This is a, a short-term loan to the Marion County Housing Authority to kind of provide some bridge financing while they get some HUD dollars in that, that have been approved, and it's basically to cover payroll in that interim period before the federal funds are actually received. This is authorized under the Oregon Housing Authority law, both for the housing authority to borrow, as well as for the county to be able to loan to the housing authority. And so this proposal before you is an intergovernmental agreement that spells out the terms and conditions of the repayment of the short-term loan. It is intended to be for a period of up to six months, because it is just intended to be that short-term bridge financing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Are there questions? All right.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would go ahead and make the motion to approve this intergovernmental agreement for a short-term loan of up to $60,000 to the Marion County Housing Authority, and just make clear that the Board of Commissioners serves as the Board of Commissioners for the county, also serves as the Board of Directors, I believe we are, for the Marion County Housing Authority. So we have had numerous discussions about the county's financial situation. In fact, we just had a, a Housing Authority meeting yesterday and had the budget presented and the various dynamics. So I think this is prudent force for us to go to, it is just short-term, and there are terms for repayment, and so I'm supportive.
All right.
Second motion.
All right, it's moved to second, and we do approve the 60,000, up to $60,000 loan to Marion County Housing Authority. Further discussion? If you don't hear any, call a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next items, under Public Works, we consider approval of the following items for Brown Road Northeast Improvement Project, and there's three of them, and I'll read them. Amendment number one is to receive $778,563 additional funding from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Amendment one is to receive $874,000 from the City of Salem to add construction and right-of-way services for the city's portion of the project, and C is an intergovernmental agreement for Oregon Department of Transportation to provide right-of-way services for $5,000 and approve resolution to authorizing acquisition and condemnation of property required for the project. Cindy Schmidt is here with a, with a presentation, so you want to go ahead, Cindy?
Certainly, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm with the Public Works Department, and we are managing a, a project on Brown Road. We have the four items, actually, that we would like you to consider this morning, it's packaged as three items. I'd like to, first of all, just refamiliarize you with the Brown Road project, it's been over about almost 18 months since we've been here with the original agreements for the project.
Cindy, like everyone, would you pull it close, I, I struggle a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. The Brown Road is in northeast Salem, and this shows approximately where it's at, and the red shows the limits of the project. The little dotted lines at the top and the bottom of the project area show where there's existing sidewalks, and the sidewalks on San Francisco Drive lead into the back end of McKay High School, and as you can see, Scott Elementary is kind of at the upper end of the project. So, the primary purpose of the project is to provide facilities for these neighborhood folks and the children to get to and from these facilities and to and from the commercial area on Silverton Road. This is the cross-section that we're ultimately going to have out there, where we'll have bike lanes on both sides, as well as sidewalks. The funding for the project originally came to Marion County and the City of Salem in 2012, and more recently, the City of Salem received some additional funds to actually construct a portion. The original funds were just for the county to design and construct their portion of the project, but for the City of Salem's portion, we just had the funding lined up to do the design, and they were seeking funds for construction. Well, they were successful in finding some additional funds for construction, so as you can see, about two-thirds of the project is on county road portion, and about a third of it is in the city limits. And this will complete sidewalks all the way to the north, up to Silverton Road, and meanwhile, the city is still seeking funds to do improvements to the green portion, you see on the slide there at the bottom, that would take them, take the facilities all the way down to Sunnyview Road. At that point, this whole corridor would be completed. The way the project is set up is the county's going to design and acquire the right-of-way and construct both the city and county portions of the project as one project. The city, however, will perform any condemnations if they were needed for the portion within the city, and then the, the city will reimburse the county for all the expenses associated with the development of their portion of the project, so we're effectively working as their consultant and, and packaging the two together, so it's more efficient for both agencies. This little graphic here just sort of shows that we had the original two I G As and the relationship between the three agencies involved here. So today, what we're asking to do with agreements between Marion County, ODOT, is to amend the main I G A with ODOT to reflect that there are some additional funds now in the package to build on the city's portion, and then also to execute the first I G A for right-of-way services between ODOT and Marion County, which will allow the right-of-way acquisition phase to begin shortly. And then with that, as you know, with federal funds comes the requirement that we execute a resolution that indicates that, that the county would be willing to go to eminent domain proceedings if necessary in order to complete the project. The, on the right, the, the main I G A needs to be amended between Salem and Marion County to just include right-of-way phase as well as the additional funding that they had obtained. This is just a quick summary of the amount of money involved in this project, it's about $2.4 million project, and you can see that it's coming from a variety of sources. It's kind of unique that we've been able to pull this many different sources together for this kind of a project here in Salem. The design is about 60 percent right now, we are about ready to enter into the right-of-way acquisition phase, and just so you know, this project doesn't require any permanent right-of-way easements. It does require a number of temporary construction easements, and so the process is essentially the same for acquiring those and working with the citizens, but we do not have to buy any permanent right-of-way, we have everything we need for this part of the project. And the idea would be to go to construction in the summer of 2015, and to do that when school is out of session, so that we can have the least impact to the folks that are trying to use the sides of the road now, so. So the four agreements, as I mentioned, and you read it first, was to sign those amendments between Salem and Marion County, to sign the amendment between ODOT and Marion County, and then to execute the right-of-way I G A between ODOT and Marion County, and then adopt the resolution, and I believe all those pieces should be in your package. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
All right, questions?
A couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Actually, I have three questions.
Three.
Sorry. So, question number one, the 141,000, I think it was, that was the county's match?
Yes.
Is that primarily engineering services, is that a hard cash match, or what is that?
It's actually both, soft and hard. There's some hard cash matches in there because there are certain fees for consultant services, we have to pay ODOT the cash match portion, but the, the lion's share of that is county engineering staff time, for which we'll, we will get reimbursed for a good chunk of that, so.
Okay. Second question is, the fact that we're able to construct the city's part, does that have anything to do with federal funds? Does that have anything to do with the certification that we got, you know, the process we went through, I can't remember the technical name of it, to allow us to do those kinds of projects for others, or is this, would this have been done anyway?
It, it could have been done anyway, but it, because the certification process has become more formal over the years, it is required in order to be able to do these federal aid projects now, and so that does, that certification that we have does allow us to do these projects jointly with, with our partners, and we have a similar arrangement with the City of Turner right now for a Delaney Road project, and so I, I think it's very beneficial, I think it's kind of, kind of exciting to be able to do, to help each other out like this, and it just is so much more efficient than if the city had geared up to do that little short piece of project as a whole separate project, so.
And then I'm looking for the eminent domain resolution, so where would I find that in all of these papers?
It would be the last document, I think.
Okay, here it is, I found it, actually, it's not last in my book, so.
Oh, it has many, many exhibits attached to it.
All right, so I thought I heard you say that there's no condemnation required?
Actually, there's no permanent right-of-way easements needed for the project.
Okay.
We still have to acquire temporary construction easements, and under federal aid projects, those are handled just the same as if we were acquiring actual property, and so the resol, excuse me, the resolution for condemnation would apply if we were unable to get those temporary construction easements.
Okay. And you'll keep us posted if there, if someone has an issue with that and we start to get sideways?
Definitely.
Okay, great. All right, those were my questions.
Any others?
No.
Well, I, I do, Cindy, I think it's rather simple, but I'd like to know about, and I don't think it's come up before, and it's temporary, what obligations are on restoration after the work's done? So, assume you're, you're parking equipment or digging up somebody's front yard, the guarantees that after you're done, what? What is our policy there?
Well, the, the temporary construction easement allows us to enter onto private property in order to make the restorations, and the, in particular, there's a lot of homes along the west side, especially of this section of road, we have a lot of driveways to deal with, and we want to make sure that the roadway work blends nicely into their existing driveway so that they don't have lips to deal with that they have to get up on. And then there's a certain amount of landscaping and restoration of yards, and try to beautify the area a little bit as we go through there.
So we don't just leave and say, we're done? That's all I wanted to hear.
No, we don't.
And then I didn't hear you say, oh, first of all, I'm very happy, and it's a pretty good example of working together and kind of get a project done, I see there's a, the rest of it yet to be addressed, but this particular section should be done, if I understand it right, when we get done. When will that work start, and when do you expect it to be done?
The, the work for this project should start as soon as school's out in 2015.
Okay.
So next, not this coming summer, but the summer after. We'll be finishing design and a right-of-way acquisition, or easement acquisition, this and a right-of-way acquisition or easement acquisition this summer, and then probably bid the project in the fall so that it can start construction as soon as school's out.
We've been working on this for a long time, though, haven't we? It's been
It, it takes a while.
Three, four years that I've been hearing about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so two years from now, it will be done?
Yeah.
All right. I just wanted you to say.
I heard a little reluctance with that, yeah.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you. So I don't know if I suspect they don't want us to do them in a group, but can we? All right, let's do that.
We can do it all together. But I, I do, very quickly, as I was looking through
the exact properties, we're talking about a couple of blocks there for these temporary construction easements. How many properties are actually affected? Just generally, do you, you know?
Boy, you know, I actually don't know the total number. I know there's, there's only four inside the city of Salem, and I think there's on the order of 16 to 20
Okay, that's helpful, yeah.
In the county portion. And that's just a guess.
I just find a general idea. And, and with regard to needing the easement, or if things got really bad and you had to think in terms of eminent domain, have you, at this point in time, had any resistance or anyone saying, I don't like this project? I wish they'd go away and leave us alone?
We have had one public meeting. I don't think we had anybody not generally supportive of the project. But we have, of course, a lot of property owners at the early stages wondering how is it going to impact their property. And the design just wasn't done far enough to have a lot of specifics to show them, but at least we wanted to make them aware of kind of what's, what's coming. And generally, for temporary construction easements, we don't typically have a lot of resistance. You know, occasionally, but generally speaking, people want kind of the blending of their driveways and stuff to happen, so.
And then, now that you're, you're speaking, I think, of one final question. You've had one community hearing, conversation, presentation. Are you planning, I hope you are, to, now that we're getting close to the actual construction, go back to the neighborhood and say, here's where we are, here's what's going to happen, and, and the timeframe that, that's anticipated?
Yes, we've also been sending notices to the people on our mailing list to try to keep them abreast of the developments. And we will be having a second public meeting at some point here in the process.
All right, good. Just, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the following items for the Brown Road Northeast Improvement Project. Amendment number one, to receive 778,563 additional federal funding dollars from Oregon Department of Transportation. Amendment number one, to receive 874,000 from the city of Salem to add construction and right-of-way services for the city's portion of the project. And an intergovernmental agreement for the Oregon Department of Transportation to provide right-of-way services for $5,000 and approve resolution authorizing acquisition and condemnation of property required for the project. And of course, that acquisition and condemnation, we've discussed, and I'm understanding that won't be a problem. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second?
I will second the motion. And I did misspeak. This is at the end of my paperwork, but there are 18 attachments. I was looking for the single-page resolution. So that means there's 18 of those temporary construction easement books. So that's the exact number.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to fault, to approve the items regarding Brown Road improvement that were just read and were listed on our agenda. Any further discussion? If you don't hear any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. We have one public hearing today scheduled for 9:30. We're a bit past that, so that's fine. It's under Public Works Planning. It's a public hearing to consider amendments to the Marion County Code, Title 16 Urban Zone Code, and the Title 17 Rural Zone Code. And Joe Fenimore is here. I was afraid he was just walking out the door as we started, but he's come back to face the music. Joe, would you go ahead?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, this is Joe Fenimore. On January 8th, 2014, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution initiating revisions to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes. The purpose of the revisions is to clarify the two codes related to issues that may be in violation of, uses that may be in violation of state or federal laws. The Urban and Rural Zone Code each contains separate provisions that do not allow issuance of a permit if property is being used in violation of the code unless a permit would correct the violation. The Rural Zone Code also prohibits issuance of a permit if a property is being used in violation of state or federal law. Although the codes do not allow a permit to be issued, it does not specifically prohibit these uses. Provisions are needed in order to make it clear that the uses in violation of the code, state, and federal laws are not allowed and to standardize the language between the two codes. The provision that needs to be, provisions that need to be revised are found in Section 1635060 of the Urban Code and 17110680 of the Rural Code. Planning staff work with legal counsels to develop proposed language for the board to consider. In the memo that you have, the deletions are in strikeout and the additions are in bold underline. Under the proposed language, the codes would read, "No permit for the use of land or structures or for the alteration of or construction of any structure shall be issued, and no land use approval shall be granted if the land for which the permit or approval is sought is being used in violation of any condition of approval of any land use decision, is in violation of local, state, or federal law, or is being used or has been divided in violation of the provisions of this title unless issuance of a permit or land use approval would correct the violation. All land uses shall be conducted in full compliance with any other county ordinance, code, and requirements of state and federal laws. Failure to conform to other applicable laws may be grounds for revocation of any permits and enforcement action, including but not limited to a citation in accordance with Chapter 1.25 of the Marion County Code." The board has the option of continuing the public hearing, closing the hearing and leaving the record open, or close the hearing and approve, deny, or modify the proposed amendments. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions, thank you.
There's two.
Well, maybe. I'll start with two.
It's fine.
So, Joe, thank you for the description. And I'm just trying to understand, so the 1635060, is that in the rural or the urban zone?
That is the Urban Zone Code.
Okay, so right now, this language is in violation of local, state, or federal laws, not in the Urban Zone Code at all.
Correct.
And then in the Rural Zone Code, which is that, is that 17110680?
Correct.
That's the second one. It said county ordinance code or requirement of state law, but it didn't have federal law?
Correct.
Okay, and then can you tell me what triggered the, the look at this in terms of adding federal law to this?
We were looking at, at the federal laws, the medical marijuana dispensaries, and it triggered, actually triggered the, a look at it to see if, to see if, if we have language in the code. And then we realized that, that there were, there were aspects in each code that were different. We wanted to consolidate them into the one.
So they make them consistent, number one. Number two is adding in the federal law part?
Correct.
Okay, so then maybe, and I don't know, Glory, if you can help Joe with this, but in terms of the ordinance that's being proposed and the regulation, this doesn't add anything that, that would then be in conflict with the, with the regulating of it? Is that correct?
Under the proposed ordinance that's being considered, the medical marijuana dispensary in the certain zones would be able to get a ban exemption permit. And so that permit is what would be permitted. So that would be the, basically, the out from that. This, this, excuse me, this language is, is a little bit broader. It's intended to cover other types of, of state and federal law compliance issues. But it does have the ability, because of the ban exemption permit, that it would not be in conflict with this, so long as that is complied with.
Right. Just wanting to double check, because people might be worried that we have an ordinance that we're proposing, but then by passing this, it has a greater standard because of the argument that marijuana is, is contrary to federal law.
Well, and Commissioners, part of this is because of the, the conflict with how OHA is allowing this in agricultural lands, but it is prohibited under 3460 from being at the grow site. So it's not how we would typically look at a facility in conjunction with an agricultural, so it's, it's not appropriate for an agricultural. So, so this is kind of how it allows the county to say, okay, for agricultural land, which is our farm and forest land, that this is not necessarily an appropriate use. It's in conflict with other state laws regarding land use and the kind of uses that are allowed on that, as opposed to a pharmacy, a storefront, a more commercial-type operation that would be appropriate in other zones. And so that's where the, the board is really looking at, what's the, if it's allowed, where's the appropriate place? And it wouldn't be in the farm and forest land in Marion County under this particular proposal.
So if I could just restate what I think I heard you say, a shorter part of it, is that ordinarily, with all of the other activities that are in farmland that aren't purely farming or growing wine, grapes or whatever, the land use or laws that we have in the state that then govern our ordinances and code at the county require that an agricultural activity be in conjunction with the agriculture on the property. So in other words, if you're growing grapes and you serve wine at a wedding, you could have a wedding, and that's kind of where they made the connection. Or we have farm stands where you sell jelly if you grow berries or pies or things like that.
Agritours.
Right. So, but here, the state law has expressly prohibited the connection between the grow site and the business activity. Therefore, we don't want grow site, I mean, we, we don't want the business activity to be in a different place in agricultural land. And by putting this language in, it, it sort of restates or confirms the ban provision in agricultural and forest land. Does not apply to the exemption that we would be allowing under this ordinance in the industrial, commercial, and mixed-use areas.
That's correct.
Did I say that? Do I have that down?
Correct.
Okay.
But I even simplify it a little bit more, and that's, that's a great, I'm thinking, it really helps us clarify what, what the laws are and our intention to comply with those laws, which really should make it easier for anyone in the general public to understand what we must comply with relative to state and federal laws. Is that a fair statement?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it's, it's very difficult, because we have a lot of different laws at the state and federal level to comply with, including land use laws. And we have some laws that, that have set up an apparent conflict. And so the county is trying to come up with a way to best resolve the conflicts between their obligations under land use laws, under the medical marijuana program laws, under all of the other state and federal requirements that the county is obligated to comply with. And so it, it is a really difficult balance, but the, the county is trying to consider how to best address all of these issues and come up with something that is reasonable as well as, as workable.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Joe. And you'll come back perhaps with any response. We have two people signed up that would like to testify. One's listed in support, and I don't know if that's where they want to be or not, but I'll give them that opportunity to decide. But I'll start with, again, these, maybe we need more space here, but names are pretty, Bradley, and I'm sorry, Steerma. And, and if you'd come up, state your name and address, just about like you saw earlier in this meeting, and then give your testimony.
Thank you. It's actually Steinman.
Oh, I wasn't close.
S-T-E-I-N. So I'm Bradley Steinman, Oregon State Bar number 136110. I'm an attorney representing the Salem Cannabis Industry Association, and I'm associating with attorney Lee Berger from Portland to help represent. My address is 5521 Southeast Ogden Street in Portland, Oregon, 97206. And I agree that it's a complicated, logically sort of inconsistent layer cake of laws with the federal, state, local situation. It's very fascinating to me as well. And I understand the predicament of the Commissioners. I just wanted to point out that under state law, in order to be registered, a medical marijuana facility must be located in an area that is zoned by the local governing agency for commercial, industrial, or mixed use, or as agricultural land. And I think that what state law does not penalize, local law should not penalize or require further regulation inconsistent with state regulation. I think state law adequately regulates in terms of security, public safety. This was a decision made by the state legislature. And I would ask on behalf of my client that this commission please not use their local zoning authority and land use planning powers to amend MCC 1635060 of the Urban Zone Code and MCC 17.110.680 in the Rural Code to either directly or indirectly ban or prohibit the establishment of medical marijuana facilities. This is, we're moving towards the end of criminal prohibition that's been going on since well before many people that were in this room before were born. And this community is asking to be treated like any other lawful, regulated industry. And they just want this opportunity, now that they're legal under state law, to be treated like any other legal industry by the local government. This is a nascent lawful industry that's moving from the dark shadows of a black market and criminal prohibition into the light of day. So please do not pass what will effectively indirectly be a ban and give this community the chance to prove themselves and to demonstrate that they can be lawful leaders of the community, pay taxes, comply with all laws, and be a benefit to this community.
If I could, just, because I, I thought you were going a different way. And did you tell us that there is, that we're not legally able to make this decision? And I didn't, I didn't quite get it, if that's what you were saying.
The, we, my client opposes the proposed amendments as they currently are, and we would argue that they are illegal and unconstitutional.
Okay.
Excuse me, you, we, we have to, now, last minute, I thought, why, in your opinion, why would this be illegal? What would?
I don't want to give my legal opinion on the fly without having my attorney who I'm associating with on this matter, and without having the chance to kind of draft it out and work through it together. But it's, it's state, state law would preempt local law that was effectively a ban or sought to regulate conduct in excess of what the state law requires, or in any sort of way that's inimical to what the state law requires.
Could I put it in my layman's terms? What I think I hear you saying is state law effectively bans local control?
No. State law would ban local prohibition. It's complicated in terms of case law and the structure that the legal counsel for the commission mentioned, but it's very particular in how it's worded. And it's very, it seems logically inconsistent, but it's legally congruent, or it works out. And I didn't write federal or state or local law, and I understand your predicament.
May I ask, I think you have a question?
Yeah, well, I heard you say you want to be treated like any other industry. And I've also heard people say that they're willing to be regulated, quote unquote. And so I just want to make sure, and, you know, I, I understand that you're putting your point of view on the record, and we all do that, and I appreciate that. So I'm not suggesting otherwise, but
The client's point of view.
The client's point of view, thank you. So when other laws pass in the legislature, which are numerous, all right, I mean, there's a lot of bills out there that affect the land in Marion County, Marion County always comes back to our code, figures out how that law affects our code, and then makes the appropriate adjustments. One that I can think of that was quite a big change, and we worked on it through the Association of Oregon Counties, we had a Farmland Activities Task Force. Up until the law passed, wineries could do the weddings and things, but a lavender farm couldn't have a lavender wedding because they weren't a winery, all right? So it allowed, it broadened the types of activities, allowed us to put in a permit process. We had people that came forward, they pleaded their case. We said, all right, you know, you can have one lavender wedding, or three, or, you know, whatever. We don't have lavender. It's the story I remember, because Kathy George told it in Yamhill County, but it's a, it's a very
We do have it, it's a little
We, all right, okay. Well, it's a very descriptive kind of thing. Where people kind of get the gist of what we're talking about. But, you know, it could be corn mazes at Halloween, or, you know, it could be any number of things. So local government has the opportunity to do that. If people violate certain provisions, so like we require on those activities, that a fire truck can get in in case there's a fire, that those activities, that a fire truck can get in in case there's a fire, that they make sure that the roads are good, that there's enough parking, that they have enough porta-potties, all that kind of stuff. And that's our local responsibility. And if people have an event, and we get a lot of complaints about it, and our sheriff goes out, or code enforcement people, and find out they weren't playing by the rules, then we can pull back and say, well, you know, you kind of violated our trust, and we're not going to give you a permit in next summer, you know, that kind of thing. And I'm not suggesting a dispensary, it's more like a business, it's not like an activity. But what I'm trying to say is that local government has that authority to be able to regulate kind of the details of things. So if you're saying that it's okay to be regulated, and if you say you want to be treated like any other industry, every, I mean, you wouldn't believe how many people come forward here and want to put an electrical generator on their farm, or want to, you know, do various types of business activities. And oftentimes, we either tell them no, because the state law doesn't allow it, or we put all kinds of provisions on that say, your generator can only be this tall, and can only generate this much electricity. So I hope you're not saying with this that local government doesn't have the authority to take and say that we cannot regulate what is in, not in conformance with local, state, or federal law. I'm just not understanding, I mean, I feel a conflict kind of in what in what you're suggesting, where you're saying, yeah, we're willing to be regulated, but we're only willing to be regulated under state law. We will not allow you to put into your code the implementation provisions that we need in order to exercise that local regulation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right.
It does. I understand that it's kind of logically inconsistent, or doesn't seem or feel rational. But the way the courts have construed the Federal Controlled Substances Act, kind of in harmony with state law, and a certain provision of the Federal Controlled Substances Act, that kind of defers to state regulation, has worked out in such a way as states have passed medical marijuana laws, or states have passed outright legalization laws for adult use, that the federal government hasn't sought to preempt those legalization laws. Or, you know, all the states that have passed medical marijuana laws, most of those laws, if not all of them, are still good in most of those states. And we're not arguing that local governments have no place and no authority control. There is that sort of authority, and that's important. And I understand the dilemma and the concern. I do sympathize. The, it's, state government is considering whether or not to grant local governments the authority to pass outright bans. That future is uncertain, at least in terms of amending HB 3460. The legal argument, as it stands now, is that without that bill passing, local governments cannot pass either directly or indirectly what amounts to a ban of medical marijuana facility. So we would ask you guys to hold off on doing that until either the state legislature acts, or until it's worked out, and to sort of give these businesses a chance. If they can't be in agricultural areas where they're far away from children, and the city, and out of sight from the public eye, and they're kind of pushed back into the shadows, then where else could they operate, besides in a black market? So they're...
So you don't believe, if I could, you don't believe they could be in a commercial zone, where other businesses...
Well, there's other restrictions in terms of the statute for locations. They can't be within 1,000 feet of another medical marijuana facility. They can't be near certain educational institutions that are primarily attended by minors. And there's all these other restrictions that are in there, in the state statute, and in the OHA's regulations. And I think that local law would have to be congruent, or kind of coextensive with those state laws and state regulations, and not seek to frustrate the intent of the state law, which was to legalize medical marijuana facilities effectively, and provide safe access to patients.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Milk?
Something you said a little earlier triggered in my mind, something that does hang over me as we're working through all of, all of this. And the federal government, some people are inter, and I don't have the document here with me today, so I'm going to try to summarize it in my layman's terms, I'm not an attorney. Some people are generalizing and say, well, the federal government doesn't care what, what the states do, they're passing these various laws. There is a document that has come from the federal government to say...
A call memo.
You need, we need, states, and I view it as for us at the local level, we need to make sure, however, that, and I think you know the document I'm referring to, that there are, that we very, very carefully, in conjunction with, in coordination with federal law, that we're very carefully overseeing and regulating.
Yes.
So it's a delicate balance. And that's where we find ourselves in this predicament. It's kind of like, well, which, which law do we follow today? Is it the federal law? Is it the state law? Can we make a statement ourselves about, for me personally, wanting to be very, very careful what we do? As you're expressing, there are so many, I'm going to go back to it, there are so many discussions and information that needs to be shared, so we can come to the very best solution to all of this. At the same time, while we're working through these issues, we, we need to protect Marion County and the citizens at large. And I'm not suggesting to be discriminatory against your clients, but to look at the good of, of everybody, and that we have something that, that can guide us in the meantime, to the best of our knowledge. This is not easy for us, but we can't, I can't speak for myself, to just say, well, we'll just kind of throw caution to the wind, and we'll, we'll see what the discussion is at the legislature. We'll see. We have to protect the people.
Absolutely.
So I think there, there are a lot of pieces of information here that, that we need more knowledge on, is what I'm saying. So...
The, the document you're referring to is the second call memo. It's the third federal DOJ policy...
Yes.
Guidance issued to federal prosecutors under the Obama administration. The first one was the Ogden memo of 2009 that said, we'll have a deferential approach to the states. We'll kind of kept with his campaign promise to let the states regulate medical marijuana. In June of 2011, they issued the first call memo, which said, we were just kidding about that first memo. We're actually going to crack down really hard. Federal law says what it says, and it's sort of an outright prohibition. And they reserved that right in the first Ogden memo. And then the new call memo says, oh, actually, you know, maybe not. We're kind of go, go back to that first approach. And that's the problem with law versus policy.
And, and I interpret that as states and local counties and cities, you, you need to be very careful what you're doing. That's what we're trying to do, is to be very, very careful. Those are my layman's terms. So I guess I want to comment a little bit on this part of this discussion.
I'm sure. Let's take it back to the context of what's before the board right now. And that is the proposal to amend the rural and urban zoning codes to prohibit, unless otherwise permitted, uses that are in violation of state or federal law. On its face, that language is not unconstitutional. It's not outside of the Board of Commissioners' scope of authority. What you're going to really see is, if there is a conflict, if there is something that is not allowed by this, it's going to come in as applied challenge.
I need it.
So on its face today, this particular language is not either unconstitutional or outside the Board of Commissioners' authority. And when you talk about the interplay between the other ordinance that the Board of Commissioners is considering, which does allow a process for commercial, industrial, mixed-use zoned plans, for a medical marijuana dispensary facility to come in and to say, okay, in Marion County, we're in agreement, we want to be operated like a business. And the state laws, because of the confidentiality of not saying where the facilities are, or who's in charge of them, that's where, you know, how do you get someone to come in to voluntary register in those kind of zones?
Well...
And so this is, this is kind of the interplay. But this particular, what's before the board right now, is really just a clarification, and it's going to be an as-applied challenge that is, is really something that's actionable.
Under the most recent version of the temporary rules of the OHA implementing HB 3460, there's a requirement that a person responsible for a facility that's applying has to sign a waiver that they would allow the location and name. I don't have the specific language, but there's sort of a waiver to make it public.
No, no, you're incorrect in that. It is a waiver. It is a waiver that allows OHA to make a list. We have specifically asked, they are not going to disclose that publicly.
The registration.
Excuse me, please, please, let, let's follow our, excuse me, please, that's not, this is not a conversation around the table. That's just not our procedure for our board hearings.
It's not, it's not an argument. It's just a discussion. It's not helpful. There can be disagreements and confusion, and I'm sure that there will be, and there already is in this state. This will be figured out. I just wanted to represent the interest of my clients that disagree with your legal theory, and that's all I really wanted to say today.
And, and thank you, Gloria. I appreciate your comment there. And this, this, to me, is what's, what's difficult, is there are varying legal opinions. And, and we've got to all be on the same page, is, is part of what is happening here, as we're sharing information and learning what the law means, and how it's interpreted, and what are, what's best for us to do.
And unfortunately, it's changing quite often. So it's sort of fluid in what it is. Today is different than what it was a year ago. And I appreciate the time today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more signed up. And again, it looks like Joanna, I don't know. Is she here? Just a second, please.
Looks like Jan.
No, nobody close to Joanna or Jan I wanted to speak. If you want to come up, real quick, and that's, normally, we would rely on the, only the people that signed.
I just wanted to clarify, again, to show proactiveness...
Would you go ahead and give your name and address?
Amy Zimmerman, 5150 Norma Avenue, South Salem, Oregon, 97306. We, as medical marijuana facilities, again, to show proactiveness, which a copy is in your packet, have registered as Salem Cannabis Industry Association. And I just want to take a minute to read a draft mission statement, as this is all moved quickly. And we'd actually like to invite you to join, any community members, including DA Walt Beglow, Jason Myers, Sheriff, any of you. Our goal is to build a united alliance which reinforces all state Oregon health authority requirements, thus creating safe access for OMP, patients, caregivers, and growers, to exchange their herbal medicine, preserving the highest morals for safety in our community. Our draft vision statement is SEIA will hold minimally monthly meetings the second Wednesday of each month, with the understanding additional meetings may be called with a 48-hour notice. Initial objectives of our association is to create and vote on member slash board titles, create member and board biographies to submit, educate community on medical marijuana by attending and communicating, communicating at least monthly to the local, neighboring, community associations, and city district representatives. We want to remain in communication as needed with public safety council and officials. We want to increase jobs and grow this industry in a professional manner. We are passionate, though. We want to increase local public health awareness. And we want to be a positive strength to communities, showing accountability. And this agenda is based upon many things that I've heard you state over the past meetings. And we're here to be on the same page. We're not here to create, you know, heroin and meth users. In fact, we've done quite the opposite. I have quite a few patients who we've assisted in getting off of meth and heroin. We don't want it on our streets. I went to find no meth in my neighborhood stickers. I can't find them. I had to make my own printout and stick it on my front window. We've had to tell people to leave. I sat on hold for 20 minutes at our non-emergency number, because I had a teenager walk into my facility attempting to get in. And my security and my staff immediately said, you need to leave. And he was trying to say, I have pounds of weed. And as I'm on the phone with non-emergency police, 20 minutes, my phone died, but he had left. I mean, nothing unsafe happened. But we want to create a strong message that we want to follow law. So please don't take the local law and trump state law, because I don't think any of us will benefit from that.
All right, thank you.
I also have a brochure to hand out.
All right, Joe, if you would come back then. Do you have any comments, and/or does anyone here have any questions?
I want to hear what Joe has to say first.
I have no additional comments at this time. I'll be happy to answer questions.
All right. Are there?
Well, I, I do. I know we have some options here this morning on, on what to do. So I just want to share my thoughts. Is, this has been an interesting morning, lots of information shared, and appreciate the information everyone has shared. You know, I, I don't know that I'm ready. I don't think I am. I'm not ready to make a decision yet. I, what I would like is, there have been a couple of issues touched on this morning, that what I'd really like is to have Gloria, our county council, provide a little information on some of the points that were brought up this morning. And I didn't, I have some of them written down here, so I can't make a list of, it's not, it's not lengthy, but a couple of things where there was a little back and forth here on, this is, this is, this is the law, no, this is the law. It just, for our clarification, so that, that we can, can go forward.
Are you suggesting that we delay the, the ordinance next week? And do we need to have this at the same time?
No. Could this, could this come back next week? Yes. And that's what I'm hoping.
Does this need to proceed it, or can it be done simultaneously, or does it matter?
There were, there were just a couple, there was a little between lawyers, back and forth here. And I just, I just want to have some clarity on, on a couple of those points. And so I'm not looking for, you know, as we get information, I'm looking, not looking at a, at a rewrite, but just some clarification. We've had a long morning here. And if, if it doesn't upset our schedule for next week...
Mr. Chair Commissioners, this matter could be continued until next week. On the order of agenda, you would want to consider this prior to your, your second ordinance.
If, if I could, or can we, this is not, this is not a land use hearing, is that correct? Or is this considered a quasi judicial hearing? This is considered quasi judicial?
This is, yes.
Okay. All right. So the, another option, though, is that we could close the public hearing, leave it open for written comments?
Correct.
And come back next week?
That's, that's good.
And then we could have it as an action item along, and, and take it in precedent order prior to the ordinance? Is that something we could do?
Yes.
Yes, you could.
That's great. That's what, all I was looking for, yeah.
All right, someone will make a motion then to do this.
All right. I think it's my turn. And I'll try to remember what I just said. So I would move that we close the public hearing, that we leave the record open for written comments through, let's say, 5:00 PM Tuesday. Would that be all right?
4:00 PM Tuesday.
4:00 PM Tuesday, all right, until 4:00 PM Tuesday, February 18th, on this proposed amendment to the Marion County Code, Titles 16 and Titles 17. And then we, do I need to, in my motion, to say to place it as an action item on the agenda?
That's good.
Next week?
Yes.
All right, on February 19th?
That's good.
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry, second, yes.
I suppose seconded to table till February 19th.
Oh, not quite table.
No, no, no.
No, it's not table.
I know, I knew I had it wrong. Do it again for me, please.
Ah, so we're going to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
So that means there will be no more verbal comments during the meeting next time. We will still have public comment at the beginning of the meeting, as we always do, that we will leave the record open for written comments. That means anyone that wants...
That means anyone that wants to send an email, letter, whatever, can do that and it will be part of the record. If, if, we would prefer that you send it by four, well, we have to, it's quasi judicial, so it has to be sent by 4:00 PM on Tuesday. Pardon? You can send it to Jo.
You can send it to the planning division website, under, under care of Jo. You can send it to the Board of Commissioners' office.
Right, I think that's commissioners, it's C-O dot Marion dot O-R dot U-S. You can send it to, really to any individual commissioner and we forward it on to where it needs to go, but the proper place to send it is planning. Second best place would be the commissioner's office.
Yes, Marion County Planning.
Marion County Planning, right.
We're in the Public Works Department.
Right. Okay, so...
All right, I've got it.
Got it, all right. And then, and then we would put this on as an action item on February 19th.
All right. Any further discussion? Just one, just little comments. I've never have considered this as just only have to do with medical marijuana.
Absolutely not, right.
It's a consistency issue among all business. I think that's what you were telling me or reaffirming too. And it does, I don't want to ever be, I say this jokingly, but I don't want to ever be breaking laws that aren't my choice. And I, I think this will clarify that up. So with that, we'll come back next Monday to wrap up our decision and what we want that to be.
Wednesday.
And we'll call the question and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. That's the end of a, I should apologize for something personally, my daughter's having a surgery right now and I was called out with a decision to make and if I seem flustered, always am, but that was part of it. So, the last thing to do this morning is to read those places where we'll be together in this next week. And coming up very soon, on today, the 12th, at the, it's the Marion County State of the County Presentation at Broadway Commons, 1300 Street, Broadway Street, Northeastern Salem. Then at 3:30 to 5:00 Economic, excuse me, Development Advisory Board, Chameca Center for Business and Industry, Job Growers Board, Room, 3rd Floor, 626 High Street in Salem. Thursday morning, 7:30 to 9:00 Kaiser Marion County Meeting, Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. Monday's a holiday, isn't that nice? Tuesday, 8:30 to 9:30, One-on-One Department Head, Elected Officials Meeting with Assessor Tom Rolfing, Columbia River Conference Room, 451 Division Street, Northeastern Salem. Tuesday, 9:45 to 10:15, One-on-One Department Head, Elected Official Meeting with Treasurer Lori Steele, again Columbia River Conference Room. Tuesday, the 18th, 10:30 to 11:30, an executive session, Pursuit to ORS 192660, 2D, Columbia Saniam River Conference, 451 Division Street. Next Wednesday, the 19th, a date we've been mentioning, is our next Board of Commissioners' meeting here at the Assessor and Clerk's Office, 1115 Commercial Street, Northeastern Salem. That's the end of it.
The meeting on Thursday, Kaiser, what is the agenda there?
There really is no agenda. We get together with local officials or if public's invited, if you'd like to, yeah, just to keep in touch. Any, anything else? You want to pull your microphone too?
I did file yesterday to run for Senate District 11, so, thank you. Thank you. So anyway, it's just been a real, lots of things happening very quickly, but you know, all of a sudden the last few days. So anyway, just so the world knows.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know if I ever, no, I know I would never go on that path if it missed to you. Any, anything else?
Well, you did mention it when you read the calendar, but we do have the State of the County at SEDCor today.
Yes.
And we've all been working hard preparing our remarks and we will all stay within 10 minutes, correct Commissioner?
You know what, I'm, I'm going to, I'm still this morning trying to cut, cut, cut because, as I've mentioned to you, I can't just talk about the last year and, and all the things we work on, they're, they're over time, they evolve and so I can't help but to, because this is my, the last time I'll be doing State of the County Presentation, so I can't help but, well, back in 2003, come forth, so I'm still working on, I, I think I'm a minute or two over, so if, I'm going, I'm trying to cut still.
I haven't timed mine, so I think...
You guys are scared of me.
You'll have to be ready for what happens.
I'll be going last and maybe that's just as good if mine's short, but as a, I think I was the biggest offender over this last decade of too long and I didn't know, so...
Well, I brought a, a watch that we can put up on the stand if you want to do that.
I always do, but yeah.
And it is, and you're right, and we do touch so many different subjects. That's, that's the one thing I talk about this job when people ask, is you just never know. I say any, any portion of, of human existence we could deal with and biology and engineering and science and everything, so you just never know. Makes it interesting, but when you try to sum it up in 10 minutes, unless you talk real fast, and I can.
Right. I'm the master of fast talking.
You're going to leave a lot out.
Having grown up on the East Coast where we talk really, really fast, I've learned to talk really slow on the West Coast.
All right, let's, this will be, this will be your little signal, okay? You get it? All right. With that, let's call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.